Sherri, can you hear us?
Normally when it says that, I assume so.
Okay. Okay.
I left the speaker on so I could hear.
Okay, it is Thursday, September 12th. Calling the Select Board meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Um. Uh, review of the agenda.
Well, I have a couple of things. On the agenda, one is under new business as I could add resignation. Um, and I don't know if it's on Eric's list or not, is report on the Penn Road proposal. I think he was supposed to meet and figure out something on your board deck. And under the Pavilion Grant update, I've got some news about a hydraulic grant. Or hydraulic study for the other. And I'd like to take off the financial stuff because I just don't have it done and this we've been ordering since I still have a little more much up to do for that, so.
Okay.
Well, do we want to move Penn Road up to Highway instead of under new business?
Yeah, we could do that.
Sure. Yeah, I meant that it would be under Highway.
Okay, sorry.
The reservation was under new business. It's a vacancy, two vacancies will have to post.
Okay, um. As far as the minutes, are we good with that? I went over both of them.
I have a couple of things I want to put in the minutes. For the new business about the Pavilion, I want to make sure that it was noted in there when I talked about it, when I first started talking, I was talking about the fact that the Better Places Grant no longer had money. And.
I'm gonna get a truck yucky right on.
Sorry.
It's not in my packet.
Yeah, so just, just to give context about, you know, why we're applying for the other grant was that the the Better Places Grant no longer had money. It was a rolling grant. It would have been easier than that the then we went to the recreational facilities grant through the BGS and that grant was a fifty fifty match that was due September tenth, twenty twenty four.
Correct.
So, um, I also, with all due respect, um, it didn't make any sense for us to vote on it at a town meeting. I know that's what's in the minutes and I know that's what you go by. And thank you, but I, but I did say there, there would have to be an informational meeting because it would be too late if I'm going to put all this work into looking into this grant, you know, for that.
Right.
And now we do have the informational meeting on the calendar, so it doesn't really matter, but just for context, I really want to make sure that we have um, that this is why the, the rush for this grant is just, you know, trying to meet this grant's deadline, the new grant's deadline. Because we didn't have, we no longer had the ability to do the better places. Yeah.
And that's why I did the, that's why I made the decision that I made. To second you, allow you to do it with the stipulation of the meeting in October.
Right. But I just want to add that, which again.
Uh. So, uh, so do we need to make a motion to amend the minutes reflecting that or? That was something we just agree on.
Give me a stab at it and then you can come back at it to next meeting.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Insert.
No, I thought, I thought it looked fine. Were you okay? Okay. Uh, okay, um.
We'll have minutes for.
They, yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, I looked at that too. I didn't have any issues with that.
Yeah, for me, it was just a gun that I figured it would be an informational meeting, would only make sense with that grant, so. But. So I make a motion, uh, we approve the September third minutes?
No, September third minutes have to be amended.
Oh, I thought that was for the.
No, that was for the September third minutes.
Move we accept the August eighth.
Yes, yep, I'll second that.
But, yeah, with the additions. There's additions to both of them? To the, no, to the August one. Yeah, are we, I'm so confused.
This third.
Talking about September minutes and said you wanted that clarified.
Oh.
So it's the September third one that, the minutes that you took issue with the way the grant was, yes. So the eighth is fine. I will second that.
No, this is the, no, I'm talking about the eighth minutes. I wrote on the eighth minutes that that is where it was when I started to talk about and introduce the grant. So at the bottom of this, yeah. Right here, new business. That's when I started to talk about it.
But that's what you want the projections on the
Right.
August minutes.
Yeah.
The September minutes are okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but the Select Board, uh, that was all set up not for a special meeting, but for a town meeting.
Yes.
Well, but it, but it didn't make sense to do it. And I said from there, I said, no, it would have.
They instructed you for a town meeting, not a special.
Correct. And then the special meeting got changed.
Right, but she's trying to put language in a meeting that was before the other meeting. You know, the meeting that you guys instructed her to go investigate and to bring, you know, and bring back information for a town meeting. That's, that's what she's trying to change.
No, I'm not changing. I'm changing the fact that I, I want to have that in there that we have the Better Places Grant. I just want to say, because I've I felt that, and I stated, and I just want that in there, that I stated that it should be, and it should be an informational meeting because if we waited for a town meeting, why would we go through the grant process?
So you're just, you're, you're changing the wording of how it came about.
Yeah.
But you shouldn't do that because that doesn't reflect about, uh, in the way that it came about.
Well, I did state that I just wanted on the record that I stated that it should be an informational meeting. Okay.
Did you go back?
Sitting right there and I did say that, I said it should.
Can't watch that one that.
Yeah.
Didn't get recorded. She did say that though.
Yeah.
Um, so then we decided to.
That you said it should be an information meeting, but the board by consensus did say.
I understand that, right.
Probably you should put that in there that the board by consensus to create that.
We did.
And, you know, but we have changed it. Just an information.
Okay, so we approved the eighth. We're holding, no, we approved September. You gotta make a motion to approve September third.
Go back to my original motion of, of proof the September third.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I.
Okay. Citizens input.
Darren has our queries.
Okay, um, my husband, Kim Harbaugh, and I have attended just about every Select Board meeting since twenty sixteen. We now attend the meetings via Zoom due to health reasons and appreciate that this allows us to stay involved in the work of the town. It is not because we are lazy as others have suggested. We also appreciate that the governor and the state legislature have recognized the importance of community involvement and support virtual town meetings so that everyone's included. Since becoming Zoom attendees, we feel we are at a disadvantage at the Select Board meetings and believe this can be improved. The owl is the perfect device to help us participate in the meetings as long as the person speaking is close enough for the owl to pick up their voice. The owl appears unable to pick up conversations on the edge of the room or when the person speaking has turned around to address someone in the back or the side of the room. We ask that the Select Board consider how to improve these meetings so they work for all in attendance, specifically when the Select Board Chair or the person conducting the meeting recognizes a member of the audience to speak, the person be called on with both their first and last name. It is often difficult to see who is talking, so recognizing speakers with their first and last name would be helpful. Two, that all comments be directed to the chair. Side conversations are not able to be heard by Zoom attendees. Three, that the Select Board discuss and decide on a way to improve interactive communication with Zoom attendees. We have often waited with our hand up to be recognized while others in the room interject their comments. We are loathe to interrupt when it is not our turn. But if we do not know who is speaking or cannot hear what is said, we interrupt so that we can follow the conversation. We hope that you will consider these requests, Kim Harbaugh and Sherri Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
Sherri. And Kim.
Sherri, can you email that to me?
I will. I'll email it to everybody.
Have a suggestion to fix that. We can hang a sign on the front of the table that says to speak up and, and say your name, first, last name, and speak up so the owl can hear you.
And I also think though that people on Zoom are going to have to understand that when there are five people here with their hand raised before you, you're just going to have to wait your turn.
Right.
So.
Um, I want to say that we do wait our turn, but often there are multiple, people get to talk more than once. It's like, I understand, I raise my hand, I'm in the queue or we're in the queue like everybody else, but when someone speaks a second time, that is not right.
I forget to look at the screen.
All right, well, we will work on that. We, I had past conversations about a second owl too, if that would help with that.
So I mean Judy can actually just, I mean, she does a pretty good job because she can.
Excuse me, please identify yourself and be recognized. That's what I'm asking.
Very, it's very rude to interrupt. You absolutely know who is speaking and.
Excuse me, identify yourself.
Sherri, you know who I am and this is uncalled for. This is the kind of action that I witnessed at the last meeting where you were butting in and speaking in front of other people who were talking. I understand your concerns and I was pointing out that, you know, the Select Board does have a good view. If you perhaps raised your hand, you know, in a way that, you know, Judy can see it in an efficient way, you know, this is a, this is a technology that is not perfect by any stretch of the imagination and so everyone has to be everyone has to make a compromise somehow.
We will work on it. We will figure something out and work on it.
Thank you.
Does she have a comment, Eric?
I just have a question. Is there a wireless mic that goes with that system that you could just? Somebody in the back is talking, you could just hand them the mic.
I don't know.
I don't know. That's not a bad idea.
I know if you have too many microphones at once though, some.
They reverberate.
I have, I have to turn the speaker off on that one in order for this to work, otherwise it's a lot of.
Yeah.
But it might be an owl product.
Right.
I could contact owl to see if they have a product.
Okay. Okay, uh.
Pat's phone, I think, is not muted.
Pat, can you, Pat, can you mute your phone, please? Thank you.
Be very meaningful. We just have our members asking them, what would they?
Okay, uh.
Robert Hughes has joined and Doug has joined the meeting.
Okay.
His tax plan comes down to hiking taxes on the rich. Sheriff wants to rate taxes on the wealthy patients and Trump does not.
No surprise, the never millionaires and billionaires are whining that they cannot possibly afford to pay taxes. So tell us, are they not making any money?
Senator, they're, they're making money.
Our D S T M.
Like the senator, the lawyer that says, I'm not a cat. I swear I'm not a cat.
Gail, you can mute the, you can mute participants from your control screen.
I'm trying that now, but I want to see if I can get her to do it.
Pay no taxes. They remind me of the.
This is Gail. Please tell Pat to mute her phone.
That's exactly what they were.
Her phone. She did it. Thank you. Bye.
What were we talking about before?
Um.
So anyways, I didn't see that when I clicked on her thing, I don't see anything that I can mute it from this computer. Anyways.
Um. Okay, Highway.
Okay, uh. We got the culvert done between Mike Fannins and Tammy Carboni's. Uh, just needs to be seeded and mulched. The stuff up by Penn Road is all done, just needs to be seeded and mulched. The culvert by Matt Patriots also was finished, just needs to be seeded and mulched. Uh, we're planning on doing that next week, hopefully with permitting. Uh, taping is all done except for the patches and the aprons and they will come back uh, when they have a day that to fill in. Right now they have such a beautiful stretch of weather that they're putting large areas of blacktop down as fast as they possibly can.
Yeah.
Um. We've been, uh, grading, filling puddles, uh. The lawn is now mobile at the town garage.
I saw you doing that the other night.
Yeah, my lawnmower's kind of happy.
Yeah, it is.
Needs a little love. Um. The twenty twenty four truck has a rear end issue and it would not back up the other day. So, um, we took it to Deliri's. Hopefully it's a warranty issue. They, I hope so.
Twenty twenty four. We're still in twenty twenty four.
No, it's a twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty one.
Very twenty twenty.
But we have a five year warranty or something.
Um, they dumped the fluid and they said there is some metal shavings in the fluid. So they have to get deeper and find out what's going on with that. So that's, um. He said they get, hopefully get into it at the end of this week or beginning of it. Hopefully that'll be back, um. That's all I got. That's not on the agenda.
Um. So the West Timothé winter maintenance, that they have not contacted me at all. Have they contacted you?
Not contacted me.
Okay, so.
So you can probably update the other board members as to what transpired.
So, um, uh, Gail, Eric and myself went over to the uh, Wells Town Meeting and brought up the whole scenario of them taking care of the roads over there for us. We may pay them, we may swap out, we scratched, I think, I believe we nixed that whole idea of swapping work. Because I think that was just going to kind of get into the weeds of keeping track of hours and stuff, or is that?
I, I think it still should be on the table.
I mean, it can be if they.
Because I think that makes more sense for the road commissioner.
Um.
But that's just me.
But the, but so, so the road commissioner didn't show up. And we were told them a couple of weeks in advance that, I think it was a couple of weeks in advance that we were going to come to the meeting. The road commissioner didn't show up and the Select Board Chair made a comment that he was surprised we were there. He knew nothing about it. Not sure. Not sure how he didn't know. We were on the agenda. Um.
They're, they're on their meetings a little bit differently than we do.
Yeah, so, um, we had broadened up the idea of them doing it, maybe money compensation. Um, he said that they, he would get with their, uh, road commissioner, they'd go over the road, look at the roads, come up with a tentative money or plan and get back to us. They have not gotten back to us yet. Um, but the woman that sits on that board is related to Stan, so not sure how that's going to go.
So maybe you might be more cost effective in the end to hire Glenn to do it.
Or, yeah, either Glenn or our guys, yes. Oh, it's going to be cheaper than fifteen thousand dollars.
That's what they, they said.
No, 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 that's what we got paid last year.
They funded it sixty eight hundred.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Um. So, yeah, so it's still, that's still kind of up in the air because he has not gotten back to us, but their Select Board meeting is tonight, correct?
No, it was Tuesday.
Oh, it's Tuesday.
So I think we'll add it to the.
Next. Maybe reach back out to him. I mean, I don't want to. I don't want to keep hounding them. I just, if, if they don't get to us, we'll talk about the next meeting. Maybe reach back out to them, but I'm not going to beg them to do our roads. I mean, I just.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Um.
We, we did thank them for the years of plowing the little aprons for this, was, was Wells Road.
Yeah.
And I, and the Select Board Chair said, well, we're driving right there. We have to turn around, so why wouldn't we do it? So I made sure that we thanked them for that.
Well, do we want to reach back out sooner rather than later so we can make a decision in October? Because they got measure ice, that would be fine sometimes.
So, what are you nuts?
Yeah, they got measurable snow in our.
Okay, so, um, I'll give them their Select Board meeting was Tuesday.
Every, every other Tuesday or something.
So, um, I guess I'll give him a weekish.
Okay.
And then I can reach out. I have his number, so I can reach out to him.
I, I'm just thinking we might want to make a decision in October.
Yeah, just tell him that we got to put together our plans. We're at our October meeting and just, you know, try and get a feeling of where he's at.
Yep.
He did not seem too gung ho about it.
Plus we need to work, start working on the budgets in November.
Yes, yeah, so I'll reach out to him and in a weekish, I will.
Okay, no, that sounds good.
Another thing, can, uh, we go out to bid for salt? I just happened to think of that.
We're gonna have to.
Right, the Select Board has to approve that, right?
Yeah.
Um, I can print what we did last year so the board can look at it.
Was Cargill, they're ninety. They're just, I think they're ninety.
A, if you don't know, it's.
No, I know. They're not going to be, that's not going to be what it is this year.
It's a game of chance. It's up or down. You never know. But.
So I think the, the numbers of funds that we needed and stuff are ready. I will print this and we can edit it. Does that work?
Yeah.
I think all we have to do is change a couple of dates. And hope we get a better response than last year.
Yeah, we got one.
Yeah, along with what's going on with that.
And the one that we got didn't get the bid.
Right. So.
Oh, that's right.
That Cargill didn't do it.
And they're not going to.
They don't need to. I mean, that's crappy thing. They don't need to. That's the, that's the tough part about it. They're so huge that our measly contract with them don't mean nothing.
I'm going to check with Hollingford because I thought that Sandy told me that Hollingford actually got something from them, so.
Maybe it's just to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
No, I have one there.
Yeah, I just got to use the date.
We've got to change the date, uh. The October meeting is ten. Yeah. I don't think we need anything else, do we?
I'm guessing Cargill's going to tell us what they'll give us. That's what we're going to pay for it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll send us a close contract in a couple of weeks, which is typically what they do.
And it'll be less than Appalachia. We'll have to take it.
Yep. I mean, um, yeah, no, they're cheaper.
So it's, it's okay to send out?
Yeah.
Just changing the date.
Yep, I'm, I'm good with it.
Everybody's good?
Yep, was this the one that we had the email bid?
Yes.
Do we want to revisit how we're accepting bids? Or does it matter?
Well, the thing is, is.
The, the question was.
Your Cargill.
The question is how to keep it confidential, you know, when they bring you in a sealed bid, nobody knows what the bid is.
Well, that's why I was thinking if we did a second email address and we only look at it. Yeah.
I'm sure that's what other towns are doing. Visit email.
Yeah, you know, bids.tinmouth@gmail or whatever.
Right.
And then you only open it up when we have a meeting that we hopefully have a bid in there.
We probably should do that.
How long would it take to set that up?
Well, I would just say have an email it to here and I'll leave it. I won't open it because you can tell if it's been opened or not.
Right.
If it hasn't even read, it stays bold. If it has, if you haven't read it, it stays bold.
Yes.
Until you open it up.
Yeah.
And then you can go back and say unread. This is what I do all the time. Unread because I, I read it, but I haven't taken care of it yet, so that I mark it as unread, so.
So you cheat.
I get that little bit. It turns the email yellow, so then I remember I had.
I do that too.
I don't do that one.
I do that. So, yeah, I guess we can, we can do that and then going forward, create a, a bid email.
We, um, probably need to visit the procedure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We don't have time to do that tonight, but you can say you want to make a, an exception for this time to the local mail bids.
Okay. Well, we'll have to create, yes, yeah.
Policy, so.
You're going to have to reamend that.
I can find out what Sandy and Hollingford does if she, if she does, how they do the email.
Yeah, and then amend our bid policy to include emails.
And I guess they just, they want to email it? They take a chance that I'm not going to call up Appalachia and say, hey, Cargill bid.
You could give us a better deal that way.
Yeah.
And then Cargill finds out and.
I don't know that we're going to get another bid from Appalachia. Because he bid last year. He, he's the only one that bid correctly, but he didn't get it, so.
Well, Cargill was ninety and they're a hundred and. And.
So do we need a motion to, probably.
Yes.
To move forward with requesting bids for Brent assault?
Yes. Yep.
Is that your motion?
Sounds good.
Adding an email.
And adding an email option for submitting bids.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I.
Right. Okay. Uh.
Remembering that, Eric.
Yeah, it just happened to, it rang a bell.
I saw the light bulb go off.
Um, so, so the salt and sand shed, we can put at the end of Highway, if you want to talk about the truck replacement update now.
Um, we still have pricing on that. Uh, there's some things going on with selling trucks. I don't know if anyone has heard, but he said they actually have to sell an EV truck before they'll look at the diesel. They actually have to deliver an EV truck, New York and Massachusetts now before they'll even allocate the diesel trucks. So I think it's a one to one. But right now we're okay at Vermont, so he's getting, he's getting pricing together for me tomorrow.
Have you heard that?
No.
That's crazy.
New York and Mass, I guess it's a federal regulation or a state regulation or something. But.
The, the, of the truck. The the of the truck dealer can't sell a truck?
They can't even order a truck.
Unless an EV truck is.
Unless they have a EV truck delivered.
Wow.
Isn't that interesting?
That's not fair.
State commerce, I'm talking. Don't know.
That's not be a federal.
It's gonna be a state thing, cause it's not in Vermont yet, but it's New York and Mass.
How can you do that?
I don't know, he was, he said, I I'm wading through it right now, he says, I don't even. Cause that's why he was like, they told us not to price anything.
We're not using an E electric truck for blowing sanding.
He was not happy. He was not a happy person, so, oh, but he should. I'm thinking what, cause now international. Um, Patriot, I think it, no, not Patriot.
Allegiance.
Allegiance by all the international dealers.
Yep.
So you can't really. Get.
Get a quote.
A quote from anyone, so I think out what I'll do, if you guys are okay with it, I will get the specs. From him for this truck and. Call Mac and I will call Freightliner and Western Star and I will tell them to get as close as they can to that spec.
Mm hmm.
And. Give us a number of it.
Yeah, it can't hurt.
That's an RFP that the select board, like we just did with the salt, it needs to be sent to all of them, the same thing, so we get the specs, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
They can't hurt that check.
And we'll write the RFP and then we give it to them.
Yep. Yeah, if you can get the. You know, the specs from international.
Yeah.
That's what we use, oftentimes we, they send them to us. We put a piece of paper over. Delory's name and just use the other thing.
Yeah.
And so in the RFP, you say, this is what we want, if you can't provide exactly that, you have to let us know what's different.
It can't hurt to find out, they might be surprised.
Well, historically, international's twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Next guy. But now we don't even. You know. Let's keep it honest.
Okay.
So you said, uh. What truck companies?
Uh, well, we can do Mac.
Freightliner.
Freightliner, we can do Western Star. Um, I know Danby just got a. Freightliner, I think. Um, so I don't know what their pricing looks like, but I can ask.
Merman's still a thing?
I don't think so.
I don't think they are.
I don't know if Peterbilt makes a product truck or not.
Peterbilt, Kenworth, no way. They might, I think he would want a bid of him, but price I wanted them.
No, they're out of reach.
But Killington's uh Kenworth tanker was five hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Nice, well, that's got fire at brass.
It does, yes, yeah.
That's. Four hundred thousand.
True.
Yeah, I'll uh I'll have that stuff tomorrow, so we'll get it together.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have it, I was supposed to have it last week, but he didn't. Get it.
Okay. So you wanna do highway end of year report?
No, that's a financial.
Okay, that's next month.
It's not done.
Yep, um, so do we wanna do the? Salt and sand shed executive session now, or?
Did we finish Penn Road? I know you talked about it real quick, was that?
We did not, yes, we moved that road to this, sorry.
Um, they have not done anything up there yet.
Okay.
So I did talk to Dale, he said he was going to send someone up there as soon as they got freed up. So.
Okay.
I was up there. Wednesday. And it has not been cleaned up yet, so.
Well, I thought the select board is give you authorization to go and give them. Talk with them and figure out what was gonna be done.
I did, I've talked, I've talked to them, it's just not done yet.
Okay, did you, did you make a list or anything, just to, so that we all know what's supposed to happen?
Well, I told them to clean up their mess.
Do they need any stone, I mean, I.
No, I told them to just put, just clean up what they, you know, work their way back out, clean up what they did and. And uh. Make sure it's passable, cause it is in a better shape than it was.
It's now that it's dried out and stuff, yeah.
It's in better shape than it was, so, once they just clean up the mess they made. I think they'll be fine, and I told them, don't move the machine until. He sees me. So I'll look at it when they're done and.
Okay.
Go from there.
Okay.
That was the understanding I had, but there's. Not been any work done yet.
Well, right, well, until when they get ready to do the work, then you gotta.
Right.
Yep. Um. Okay, so do you wanna do that stand salt salt shed now? Executive sessions?
Hmm, I don't know if there's a whole lot to report, but maybe there is.
There's. On the standard salt shed? Well, we do, we gotta. We do have to talk about that one.
Right. So.
What do you?
I would say ask Eric to hang around a little bit.
Yeah, I can just go.
You can do Robbie and.
Doug.
They wanna talk.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
So, um, we can. Do you now? You want?
Robbie, would you like to speak, or would you like me to speak?
You have.
Sure you heard you.
Uh, you can, you can start Doug, if you want, just cause you're there.
I put some notes, um.
So can you say your name, your, your full name for Sherry?
This is Doug Fontaine speaking, can you hear me okay, Sherry?
Yes.
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 Okay. So the mission of the rec committee is to provide recreational opportunities to enhance the quality of life and build community in Timmef. Um, some of the things that we have. Uh, been doing is we set up a skating rink last winter. Um, material for that was generously divided by the valleys. Water for that was generally, uh, was, um. Excuse me. The water to fill the rink was uh provided by the fire department. Labor was generously divided by, provided by the rec committee and other town spokes. Um. And we still have the parts for that, they're stored in the basement of the. Um, old firehouse. Uh, we're not gonna do the rink again this winter, we're taking a year off, so Doug's back and recovered. Um. Uh, some of the challenges of the rink are, we don't wanna set it up over the. Mount system again, that was, you know, that's just asking for a.
Yeah.
A leaky pipe, um. So we're, um, we need a level site. And there's a potential to do that in the ball field at some point in the future. Would probably need uh some more leveling out there, maybe not. Um, but it's also. We need to get adequate water supply for resurfacing, so every time there's a snow or sleet event, you generally wanna resurface. Um, so that's. And it seems like the water off the school is just, um. You know, by the time it gets up to the end of that little hose. It's a trickle.
Mm hmm, a long ways to go.
Yeah, cause it's coming all the way from here, right? Yeah, so. Um, so anyway, we may revisit that in the future, um. Uh, but as I said, there are a couple of challenges with that, other things that the um. Rec committee has been doing, we've been involved with the town. Do we call it the town fun day?
Yeah.
Okay, with the town fun day since uh since it started. Um. We've been doing frisbee golf, dunk tank, cornhole, barbecue, et cetera, so the rec committee is pretty involved with that. Um. We created a survey as part of the regional planning commission survey. Uh, Robbie, do you have the results for that that you could speak to?
Um, I don't, I don't have them right in front of me, but um I know Gail probably has a copy of them if people wanna take a look at it. Uh, or I could uh, or I could email it to folks if they want.
We don't, we don't need to get into those details right now, but um.
The select board does have a copy of the results, so.
Okay. Um. Let's see, we've uh just recently started working with Teresa Dana, she wants to do a family movie night over at the community center. Um, sometime in October, a spook themed movie that's uh sort of kid friendly, not too spooky. Um. So, and if that is successful, that may be something that um will will be ongoing in during the winter months. Um. Uh, other things that the rec committee has been working on, we are playing a supporting role in the possible pavilion next to the playground. And um. Gail, do you know uh when we will find out if that grant comes through for that?
It's gonna.
It should, yeah, it should be the end of October or somewhere that between the twentieth, twenty fifth, somewhere around there, yeah.
Okay. So, so the rec committee is playing a supporting role in that also. Um, Robbie, do you have other stuff you would like to add?
Um. Just that uh when we kind of first started this, cause this is kind of a new. Reforming of the committee, um, we did kind of individually look at some other towns just to see what other towns are doing. Um, to get an idea of what we can be doing, and I think we're still sort of trying to. See what the community wants, so we're kind of testing things out like. The movie night that we might try to do, um. I think this winter, we might try to do some sporting event type things just in the community center for kids, um. Doug, we we did the basketball hoop, we fixed up the basketball hoop a little bit, so we're just trying to see. Um, how we can, you know, support our mission and help the town and. Some things might be, you know, we do it once and we don't see a lot of attention from people, and that's fine, and then maybe we'll try something different, so. If um if the select board hears anything from people in town about things that they'd like to see, that kind of follow our mission, please uh send it, send it along to us. So we can kind of keep, keep building uh activities and events and all that.
I I have a question, is the climbing wall active, is it?
I don't know if the school is using it, so, you know, the climbing wall was started. Uh, right when the community center was built, and we originally had a group of. Uh, people in town who were certified to uh operate the climbing wall. Um, and teach belanning and so forth, and make sure that it was all uh safe. And since. Uh, then, I think their school has wanted to use it, but they. I don't know if they actually have, because there have been issues with getting it insured.
Hmm.
And, you know, the whole liability thing is huge. Um. So it would be great to get that going again, you know, the, I mean, I know the um, the wall is in good shape, it's, you know, it's pretty indestructible, you have to replace the ropes every once in a while. Um, but getting someone to actually come and inspect it and certify it for an insurance company. Seems to be a big hurdle.
I think Steve does that. Steve's the option.
It would be the schools. It would be the schools.
Right. Um. Yeah. The insurance is a huge thing.
Oh, no, I should've said not just the ropes, but the harnesses need to be inspected at least annually as well.
Oh, yeah.
Or at least they do for fall protection.
Yep, they don't work good for like five years, too, right?
Yeah, I don't remember the life band, but if you fall on them, then you're supposed to get them checked back out again, too. It's like a riding.
So, um, and so we're not doing anything with the climbing wall.
Right.
Right now, but um, I know we and Robbie have an interest in pursuing that in, you know, in the future. Mostly for the kids, um. So just another thing about the rec committee, so we've. Um. We're kind of uh. Interested in doing things that are kid oriented, but also family oriented, so. Um. And then some of the challenges we have, um, you know, we've. Been looking at trying to develop the town lot down there, um, and try as we have. We, we can't seem to find a good way to access that uh without driving through the town garage and the transfer station. Um, so. That's a, that's kind of a hurdle there.
That was basically decimated.
That's iPhone zombie.
So.
Taxation. The corporate tax rate, in addition to state taxes, would make America very uncompetitive in the G twenty, and we start with companies like we did. When taxes were that high, I went to Ireland, particularly the pharma companies, I ask everybody, remember that, policy matters. So start asking your candidates about policy, it doesn't matter. In 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 terms of how you feel about this or that.
Boy, I'm being freaked out.
And we don't have any, so I wish, sir, I need.
There we go, okay, thank you.
So, this isn't, this hasn't been a challenge yet, but in the future, we may wanna have a budget to help fund projects, um. I know this is a a bad year for taxes, and I, we're not gonna try to burden taxpayers with that this year, but. You know, I've ponied up some of my money and a a lot of my labor to do things, like we're gonna fix the other basketball hoop and. I'll probably just buy the materials for that, um.
We allocated money for that.
For the basketball hoop?
Yeah.
We did.
We did, we allocated four hundred dollars to it.
Yeah, that's correct, we we do.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
Yep, I I brought that up a while. I brought that up a while ago, uh, sorry, Sherry, this is Robbie speaking again, um, and then we ended up. Finding that used basketball hoop and using just kind of whatever we had, so the one that we kind of fixed. We didn't use that, so, but yeah, I, we do thank you for uh approving that for a hundred dollars from before.
You're welcome.
Well, maybe we'll use that for the second one.
It's there.
A backboard alone. I priced this out. Backboard with a hoop is about seven to eight hundred bucks. Not counting the post.
Agreed.
Okay, we're taking back that four hundred dollars. So.
I was gonna make it out of pressure treated plywood.
There you go. Paint it.
That, that's. Uh, we don't need to get into the nitty gritty.
Did you guys say that you have softball planned for the twenty second?
Yes.
Yes. So, that's family oriented, right?
Yep.
Do a haunted hayride.
That's a good idea.
Down the crossover road, like we used to.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, and when it went, when it used to go over the. Little bridge there that's on Channel Road.
Yes. Oh, yeah, no, that thing, that was awesome, I loved doing that.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
He had his uh scuba outfit on, and he came up out of the channel.
It got so scary that some kids started crying, so the fire department had to like tone it down.
Oh, yeah.
Chainsaws without chains on them, it was a little scary.
They did have.
It's a haunted hayride, hello.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um. What, were there other questions you guys have for us?
I think you covered it.
Yeah.
You're good.
Yeah, thanks for.
Robbie, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think, I mean, I think that's everything, we'll just keep poking away and doing stuff, so, yeah.
Okay, sweet, thank you for that. Um. Okay, I think you guys are all set, so we're gonna.
Unless, unless you guys have other questions for me.
Uh, no, we're good.
Okay, thanks Robbie.
Thanks Robbie and Doug. That is a big bug in.
Spider.
Shut the door.
Um.
Can we shut the door?
Yeah.
Sure.
Uh. Okay, we can do the. Send and salt shed thing now.
And the lever?
Yeah, we did that. We did that.
Oh, we gotta stop the recording, right?